Check, check. Check, check.
Testing. Testing. Testing.
Check, check. Just talk whatever I want? Check, check.
Testing. Testing, testing.
I'm not feeling the love, Jay. I mean, Ms. Johnson's mic is loud. Mine is like-
Mine is not loud at all. You can't hear me, you hear me? Siaka. How are you?
Check, check.
Testing. Alright, are we okay? Ready? Superintendent, we're ready. You ready?
Five seconds is up.
Okay. Can you hear us? Oh, okay.
Check, check.
You ready? Welcome, everyone. Thank you for tonight's budget hearing. Um, at four fifty-one on April twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
We'll do a roll call. We don't need a motion. We're gonna just do a roll call. Just quick roll call of, uh, Mr. Sharif, Dr. Turner, Mr. Wingfield, Board Vice President Gravesandy, and Board President Johnson.
She's not here. Here.
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Ballot. My mic is still low.
In conformance with Board of Education Policy zero one six two in the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, this is to announce that this open public board meeting of the Orange Board of Education is being convened with adequate notice. Notice of this meeting has been posted at the administrative office, filed with the city clerk's office of the City of Orange Township, and delivered to the Essex News Daily and Star Ledger. The City of Orange Township Board of Education encourages the participation and input from members of the public at its board meetings. However, in accordance with board policy, verbal tags against individual staff members or members of the board are not permitted. Persons are encouraged to address the board regarding comments relating to agenda items or issues concerning the educational process. Public comments are limited to one per attendee for a maximum duration of three minutes. Please be advised this meeting is being recorded and live streamed via the internet. The Board of Education thanks you for your cooperation. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we will have our budget presentation.
So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, tonight, we are going to have our, uh, public meeting to discuss our upcoming budget. Uh, the budget has been a collaborative process over, uh, many months with, uh, folks from the administrative team, principals, superintendent, and of course, Mr. Zachary, who's gonna be doing the presentation for us. Uh, it's a lot of hard work, and I believe what you will find is a budget that really speaks to the student need. It addresses some of the concerns, uh, that we have with our, uh, teaching staff as well as our administrative staff, uh, with the emphasis really being placed on the needs of our children. Um, you also see some updates and upgrades to, uh, some of the facilities that we have throughout the district. But overall, I believe this is one of the, uh, tightest, most sound budgets that we've put together. Uh, myself and Mr. Zachary being here now for the, uh, third time for this process, I think we have a much better beat on what the district needs. So, uh, sit back, relax, uh, save your questions for the end, and, uh, we hope you, uh, will vote in the affirmative for this particular budget. Thank you. Mr. Zachary?
Wait, Mr. Zachary, Mr. Siaka wants to say something.
Yes, it was. And in addition to it being advertised in the paper on the nineteenth, it's posted on the website, we also made, uh, mention of it at our last, uh, public board meeting on the tenth, and we alerted, uh, the community public that the, um, meeting will be taking place today.
In addition, um, it's been featured in my weekly newsletter. It's also on the calendars of the schools of the month they go.
So, it's web-based?
Yep.
Yeah, excuse me. Yeah, I was gonna have the same question because I didn't notice whether the meeting was advertised, um, which is a state requirement. In addition, in addition to that-
I'm fully aware, yep.
In addition to that state requirement that the budget after it's, uh, approved by the county superintendent, that the budget should be published as well, um, was that published?
It hasn't been approved by the county superintendent yet.
So then why are we doing a-
It was approved by the county BA. Before he approves it, you have to have a public hearing and it's voted on. Then it's approved by the, um, county superintendent.
We're not supposed to vote on it until it's approved by the county superintendent.
It's approved by the county BA.
Well, that's not the county superintendent.
Yeah, the superintendent doesn't approve it until after you have a public hearing.
That's not true. He approves the proposed budget.
Okay, we're gonna move, we're gonna move forward.
Yes, we are. We are. We, Mr. Tarver, we're not in question mode right now. That's not what we're doing. We're not doing that. We're gonna do this morning, we're gonna do this meeting in order, and then we can ask questions after. Mr. Zachary. Mr. Tarver, please, we're not about to go back and forth. Please, let's just follow order, please. Thank you. No, we don't have our laptops.
So- Good, good, good evening, everyone. Just really quickly, Mr. Zachary is a hundred percent correct. This is not the first time that we've done the board, uh, budget presentation. So, I just wanna make sure, right, we had the conversation with our attorney prior to. The process that Mr. Zachary just outlined is exactly what it should be. Number one, we did the budget here, and we had conversations with members of the board. We then submitted the budget to the county BA for his review. Our guidance has been and continues to be, once this public hearing is completed, then it will be forwarded to the county superintendent for his approval. The county superintendent cannot approve the budget if the board doesn't approve the budget, right? So, you asked, I'm, I'm, I got the floor right now. So, when that process is all complete, then we will provide the budget to the county superintendent, and within forty-eight hours of your approval, we will post everything to the website related to the budget presentation and the user-friendly budget.
Thank you, Mr. Ballot. Okay, so, the order is, Mr. Zachary needs to present, please, and then we can ask questions and talk about this at the end of the meeting. A motion has been, been granted. Mrs. Zachary, please take the floor. Thank you. A motion has been, been granted. Mr. Zachary, please take the floor. Thank you. Thank you.
So, the first slide speaks to changes in our state aid revenue. So, over from twenty-four twenty-five, or over to twenty-three twenty-four school years from now, we received thirteen point two million in equalization aid. That's been the biggest area where we received our state aid for the new upcoming school year. And as you can see, we got two million increase in categorical special aid, and then we got another point, another half million in categorical security aid, and then another two hundred thousand in transportation aid. Our next slide speaks to our budget overview, and this basically shows our state aids and then the rest of the aid, and how we can get up to our one hundred and sixty-one and a half million budget this year, and then our funded expenses and how that money is allocated. So, if you notice at the top, we have our, our state aids, our tax levy, uh, our other local federal money, which is our semi, and then we have our budgeted excess fund balance, which we'll speak to later. That all totals a hundred and sixty-one, uh, million, five hundred thousand. The bottom half shows how our expenses are allocated out. So, if you notice, our charter aid increased by a half a million. Our central office budget increased, uh, by eight point one million. Our... Our, uh, school support has increased one point one million, and our contribution to schools increased by two and a half million. All in all, we have a total budget allocation of a hundred and sixty-two million, including our title one that was allocated into the school's budget. Of that budget, the increase we have for the current year is thirty-four point nine million, and part of that is excess fund balance that came, uh, and more than that, because the board did such a good job of clearing out all the accounts and things that are introduced through the audit, so we have this money to put back into the budget. This next slide speaks to our general fund revenue for the school year. So, these pie charts just show you how, um, the percentage of the monies that were allocated to our budget. So, seventy-eight percent, seventy-eight point three percent of our budget is state aid. Another twelve point seven is fund balance. We have eight percent, which is our local tax levy, and one percent, which is our local and federal, uh, other sources of income. This next slide speaks to our adequacy stats. Now, the governor has been pushing to get us, to make us whole throughout the state of New Jersey. So, I'm happy to say, even though we did get the increase of fifteen point nine million in state aid, we're still underfunded or under adequacy by a total of fifteen point four million. So, if you notice, our local adequacy is underby... It's not much. It looks even, but it's a mere hun- couple of hundred dollars, that's the difference, that we're underby, that we're, you know, that we're under. Our actual state adequacy, we're under fifteen point four million. So, even though we did get this increase, we're still underfunded overall in our budget. So, our total adequacy budget, if we were fully funded, would be a hundred and thirty-seven million. What we actually received was a hundred and twenty-one point six. So, I just wanted to show this slide, just to show that we actually are still underfunded, even though we did get that big increase. So, this next slide here speaks to where the money comes from and where it goes. So, of our hundred and sixty-one point five million budget, uh, thirty-nine point nine percent, thirty-nine point nine million of that is, uh, other revenues, which is like our categorical aids and things of that nature. Uh, our local tax levy is thirteen point three million, and our actual state aid is a one hundred and eight million and three hundred dollars. That equals what our budget is, and that's where the revenues come from. How we spend it? We have five point four million going into charter. We have another eight point seven million going into out-of-district tuition, which is about a two point five million increase over last year. Our non-sal is fifty-four point eight million. We have, uh, benefits of eighteen point two, and then we have our salaries of seventy-four point four million. Now, how would that money directly support the schools? Of that one sixty-one point five million, a hundred and fifty-six point four million is directly or indirectly, um, supporting the schools. We have eighty-four point two million that's at the district level, and we have another seventy-two point two million that is directly school and, uh, support. Now, of that seventy-two point two million, one point three is budget essentially for schools, and the other seventy point nine is directly at the school level. This next slide, well, the next two slides speak to our increase and how we spent that thirty-four point nine million. I won't touch on all of them, but I will touch on the big-ticket items. And keep in mind, a lot of these are gonna be one-time costs that we, that we won't have necessarily in our next budget, because bu- budgeted fund balance or excess fund balance is the money that you have to allocate in the budget and spend. So, a lot of this will not be money that will carry forward. It's just a one-time thing. So, here we have...
Mr. Zachary, before you move forward, can you just explain why we have this one-time money? You, you briefly touched upon the, um, findings from the auditors, but can you just let them know what that is and why we have this one-time money?
So, in essence, we have essentially the audit occurs. The auditors go through, and they look over all of our, not all of our transactions, but they have a, uh, material amount, and that amount is where they actually really spend their time looking at our, um, our documents. So, they take this and they size, they go through things. They notice that, let's say, we have, um, sales checks or things of that nature. They'll go through cleaning stuff up. We have accounts, uh, bank accounts where money was just there, and a lot of that was cleaned up through the audit. So, in turn, what that did was that brought back in twenty million of excess fund balance or revenue or monies that we could allocate back into our budget. Now, because we budgeted one point eight million last year, that twenty, that twenty and a half million now decreases somewhat. So, it's roughly about eighteen point seven million that you're gonna actually see allocated, but we do have to pick up the fact that we had that ex- excess fund balance from last year that we allocated. So, it's like a wash, but it's really about eighteen point seven million that's allocated into this budget for this year. Yes. But that's one-time allocation. Okay. So, how are we gonna spend that thirty-four point nine million? Um, again, I'm gonna touch on the big-ticket items, because I think these are the ones that are really important. Um, we increased special education budget by five point one million dollars. Now, two point six million of that is, um, related to our out-of-district students. There's another portion of that that's gonna go to compensatory services, and then just overall, there's about three or four positions, and then there's some extra services that are gonna be needed. So, we felt like that was an important area to place extra funding so that we can ensure that the students are getting the services that they need and support. And then we have our increase in here for people trans. We honestly haven't seen large increases when we first got here, and part of that is because we, we've since put out all two buses on the road, and we have our in-district drivers who do take on some of those trips to try to limit the cost, and then also some consolidated routing. That, um, helped us to bring down our costs. We did budget one million dollars just for, um, any increases that may come in, say, students for charter aid or, um, or just to say we in- increased routing, because, you know, you have more students that may go to out-of-district schools. And right now, we're preparing about twenty-five additional students going out to out-of-district schools for the twenty-four twenty-five school year. So, we put some money there to ensure that if there are, like, uh, uh, you know, some increases, that we can cover it. We have three million allocated for our sal- for our salary increases per the, um, bargaining, um, the new contracts and the negotiations, but we aren't done. So, again, this is just a rough estimate of where we could land, so that's what that number is for. Here we have our STEM expansion, which we are doing five additional classrooms, and we want to introduce a school of professional development. That's about roughly five million dollars cost for that expansion. We also have our ESIC, which is our, our energy savings initiative program, which we have to put some costs up front to get that program up and going. But in the long run, what that will do is by those savings that we, we get from upgrading, um, different, uh, uh, units of stuff throughout the district, that will allow us to pay for those, um, for any, uh, anything that comes, like any upgrades or things that we do around the district, we will be able to pay for that from the savings from that new program. But we do have to put some money up front to get the program going. So, that money is allocated for that. But in the long run, it will provide savings where we can do other upgrades around our facilities in the district. Next, we have our, we have money allocated for Bell Stadium, which is roughly four million dollars in that. We're looking at a total demolition and reconstruction just because of the schematics of that stadium. And we also have five million dollars allocated for roofs around the district. We have to replace roofs at, at different buildings or do some, some, you know, patchwork at a different building, but that money is gonna be for that. So, we allocated money for that. Um, and those are the ones that I'm gonna touch on. There's some smaller items, but those are the big-ticket items that we, we're, um, that I want to highlight out of our thirty-four point nine million. But we also have eleven new positions, which we are allocating one point four million dollars for those position and benefits.
Can I?
Yes.
So, some of the positions are for departments such as bilingual ESL. As you know, we've had an influx of our students who do not speak, um, English, so further supports are needed there. In addition, um, we have some support for special education as well, whether it be a BCBA, um, a behavioralist, so everybody's clear. Um, additional classroom, um, positions as well, because again, we have an influx of students with special education that have come into the district. So, I wanted to just clarify some of those eleven positions. Mr. Henry?
We're not doing the, we're not, yeah, he's gonna finish the presentation, then we're gonna ask our questions at the end. Sorry, Mr. Henry.
So, with, actually, the budget issue and our slight, uh, rest of that, just wanted to give an update on what our assessed property value is for the city of Orange. The assessed, or average assessed property value is roughly three hundred and fifteen thousand. And that comes from, uh, our taxpayers' guys and the education savings. That comes from there. Um, based on that, there's a slight increase of a, to each household of, uh, average increase of a hundred and twenty dollars for the year, potentially. But I just wanted to highlight that based on last year's, that we, we did take the actual, um, average value for a home in the township, which comes from the state, and we just wanted to show what the slight increases could potentially be for the township. So, with that being said, I just wanna, um, just highlight that in this new budget, we have fifteen point nine million, which is a twelve point five increase over twenty-three twenty-four school year. We've allocated two point five million directly to the schools, uh, in the budget this year. That's an increase over last year, uh, two point five million increase. And we will continue to do upgrades around the district as far as our technologies and concern and facilities. And we are also, um, allocating funding to improve our, um, buildings and make sure that students can learn the business without upgrading our buildings, and how can we be equipped to, to educate our children? And lastly, we will continue to be, uh, fiscally prudent in ensuring that we are saving money and that the district, the installment, and that we can continue to be able to do things that we do through, um, just through responsible budget. And with that, I want to conclude and open the floor for questions.
So, thank you, Mr. Zachary. Um, again, ladies and gentlemen, what I believe you all have, uh, been presented is a budget that takes into account numerous factors. Uh, one is to make sure that students have direct supports related to their classwork, which includes, uh, special education. It includes positions in the classroom. Uh, it includes an increase for the benefits for those particular positions. Uh, in addition, we put a huge emphasis on the infrastructure. Uh, you'll see roughly fourteen and a half million dollars that's going directly back into our facilities. Um, why is that important? It's extremely important because our buildings were in a dire state, right? We needed roofwork. We had a lot of water infiltration. Uh, we had boilers and, and HVAC equipment that was not working. Um, this money that we're putting back into these facilities is gonna allow the children to have, in some instances, state-of-the-art, uh, classroom experience. Because we're in, in the process of rolling out our energy savings incentive program, which we'll be bringing something to you all, uh, to the board for their consideration, uh, in either May or June. We had a meeting today, and right off the bat, there's four roofs that we have to do that are gonna cost me two point eight million dollars just to get the roofwork done, uh, at four locations. While that's a lot of money, the savings that we're gonna ultimately be able to recognize from doing that roofwork is gonna be astronomical, because we'll be able to put solar panels on some of our buildings, which will directly go to reduce the energy spend that we have. That energy spend, that savings is, was ultimately going to fund the cost of that, um, huge construction project that we're gonna do. So, over the next three to five years, the amount of construction that you'll see going on around the district is going to be astronomical, right? That's going to take us from where we currently are with dim lighting and, and poorly-conditioned classrooms to have classrooms that have LED lights where the temperature is one that I can control from a laptop or a phone or, or an iPad, um, with state-of-the-art boilers and Univents and, uh, HVAC. You know, we have a huge, uh, emphasis on ventilation as a result of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and a lot of the work that you see that's gonna be rolling out is directly related to, uh, repairing and resolving a lot of those issues that we have. So, with that said, uh, Madam President, that concludes our report, and we will open the floor to you and the members of the board, uh, for questions. Thank you.
Do we have any comments? Concerns, questions? Mr. Henry, you had a question?
I'll defer to, uh, Mr. Tarver first. I've still got some questions.
Sure. Mr. Tarver?
Executive county superintendent, as designated by the commissioner, shall review and approve each district board of education's proposed budget prior to its advertisement. We are supposed to advertise, uh, the approved budget after we approved it a couple of weeks ago, before we have this meeting and for final approval. Just checking a, a couple of surrounding school districts. Blaine Ridge.
So, Mr. Tarver, I don't think we disagree that the county superintendent has to approve the budget, right? So... So, we haven't had a public hearing to discuss the proposed budget, right? The budget that is before you all is still proposed, right? At this point, even if you all approve this budget, if the county superintendent does not approve the budget, which there could be something that he rejects, then we have to make those revisions, and we have to bring the budget back to you all for approval. But the county superintendent cannot approve the budget before the district actually says that this is the budget that they wanna put forth. Yes, ma'am. No, no problem. Thank you, Dr. Turner.
Mr. Henry? Mr. Tarver, were you finished? Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Henry? I mean, yeah, Mr. Henry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, a couple of questions. How recent, I guess, is the three hundred and fifteen, uh, thousand per pro- per property assessment versus the one seventy-five, one hundred and seventy-five thousand we were working on?
That's Mr. Zachary.
Well, the one seventy-five was just a number that was used, but this number is probably as of the most released, um, tax basis guide, which is for twenty-four.
And this information comes...
That number was probably just a couple of years, a few years, obviously, but, you know, since COVID, a lot of things have...
Increased.
That was the most, I thought y'all was using the average number. This is the most recent as of twenty-four. Alright.
And this is from the state website.
I can see, I can see the link to it if you want to. That'd be great. Uh, second, in regards to the four million that we have allocated versus the state one. Um, since, uh, it is the only stadium in Orange, um, what are the chances or the status thereof? If I, if there's something I don't know, of, uh, uh, city versus district, uh, partnership? Since it's our own stadium, I don't think that the district should be, should bear the total cost of the down and the rental.
Thank...
As far as the stadium is concerned, I think it should be a partnership.
Yep. So, so thank you for that, Mr. Henry.
I might think that, you know, you know, just, I feel like we're playing poker with a couple of our cards up here, telling us, you know, telling us about what we have, but nothing if we're going to, you know, carry, shoulder the burden of this entire, of costing its entirety. And I just want to know, are we in a conversation with the city and see what they're going to do?
Yes. So I'll let you know, uh, myself, the superintendent, uh, the mayor and the BA, we had... Facility, uh, the stadium itself was constructed using Green Acres dollars, right? And that, that means that the city has, um, control in some instances over what happens with the facility itself, right? So how we spend money, et cetera, the city has to, number one, they're going to apply for, um, uh, with Green Acres for any resources to help us to, uh, renovate the stadium. There's a stormwater, um, uh, retention grant that we'll call it, that the city's also, uh, going through the I-bank in order to, uh, repurpose the field itself, right? Because of, because of the age of the, the field itself, just to replace the turf would be, um, uh, irresponsible, right? The entirety of the, the field needs to be dug up and then new stormwater, uh, put into that field. Now, the city has to take the lead in proc- uh, procuring the funds for that particular work. So the city's working in tandem, not only for the, um, stormwater and the field replacement, but also for, uh, the Green Acres, because it's still a park. What this dollars here is really allocated to is the demolition of the existing, um, uh, structure that's there with the ble- with the bleachers. So that we can, um, move the, the proposal is to move the building closer towards the street and to redo the interior of the facility, because as you all know, and it's no secret, right? Our, our facilities are in bad shape. So this is going to upgrade bathrooms, uh, just put more into the facility so that it's usable, it'll have a weight room. There's a lot of other things that'll go into the building itself. Then we'll have new bleachers, then we have to upgrade the lighting that's at the stadium. Then we also have to upgrade the, um, sound system and all that that goes at the stadium, plus the scoreboard, things of that nature. And so that's what the four million dollars is really allocated for. But the turf and the moving of the field itself is something that the city is going to bear the cost for that. Utilizing Green Acres dollars and also the stormwater, uh, retention, uh, 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 grant that I'm talking about. No, just finish your questions, Mr. Henry, so we, then we'll...
What is the proposed?
The proposed what? So the demo for the stadium itself, for the actual structure and the bleachers, I think that's a, um, quicker process than going through the state process for Green Acres and the state process for the, um, stormwater retention, right? You have to fill out the application, and it has to go to the local public finance board, things of that nature, things that we can't control. But the conversations that I had with, uh, Mr. Hartwood from the BA, um, from the city, as the city's BA, is to put the application in and, um, ultimately try to see what type of RFP we can put out that would either address, uh, us working the RFP in tandem to have the contractor, construction crew, architect, all that, um, really determine how we structure that RFP and what it looks like to make sure that the work is being done in tandem as opposed to being done in segregation. We aren't there at this point, but part of what we're looking at is whether or not, um, we already, the, let me rephrase this. The district already has architects and engineers that have looked at this project. We need to make sure that our architects and engineers are on board with whoever the city ends up procuring to get on their side to do the other work that we just talked about, right? So we have to figure out what's the best way to advance this project, because it will be a joint project. Yes. No, that's okay.
Um, weren't the four schools that, you know, need the roofwork?
So it's not four schools that need roofwork, but the four schools that are going to be the first schools, uh, number one is the admin building, right? So that's not a school. It's, uh, Rosa Park, it's Haywood, and, um, the other school escapes me, but that's the two point eight million dollars that I'm trying to get that number down, so we could address the roofs first. And then once we address the roofs, then we will be able to do, um, the solar, uh, panels on the buildings.
Um, when you refer to STEM, uh, and I guess the five million, um, that's an overhaul of, uh, full, uh, abandoned or, you know, dissipated, for lack of a better term, nunnery?
Yes, it is. And so right now, because that, um, parcel of land is not being utilized, we have to pay taxes on it, because the foundation ultimately owns the property. And so because it's not being used for educational purposes currently, um, there's a conversation between us and the city of South Orange, uh, for us to pay taxes. We're trying to push back, we're trying to fight, because even though that parcel isn't being utilized, the tennis courts are, the whole rest of the structure is. So we, we are definitely negotiating, and I don't like the word "no", so I'm trying to do my best to, uh, put the district in its best, um, best light at this particular point. But what, what this money will do is ultimately do a full redesign of the interior of the former nunnery that is on the old, um, that's on the same campus. But what does that look like? We don't know at this point, because some of the building is in, um, worse shape than others because of squatters and, you know, people breaking in and things of that nature. But there was once upon a time a proposal to do some work. We're going to try to, uh, you know, reinvigorate those proposals, but I don't know where we ultimately land at this point.
Um, are we going to be held to any HPC standards as far as another reason to turn that building, or whatever?
So I'm not sure of, uh, any historical, um, nature, but if that is the case, then we will absolutely make sure we comply with whatever rules that we have to. Uh, most of the time, it's really the exterior of the structure that we have to maintain a particular facade and the look from a historical perspective. And what we do on the interior may not be impacted as much. But when that property was purchased, it was always purchased with the intent for educational purposes, right? So I don't think that there was a conversation that said that we couldn't purchase it for education, because we wouldn't be there at this particular point. So my understanding, um, is that there is no impediment with us advancing the construction work, uh, at the former nunnery. Great. Thank you, Ms. Henry.
Thank you. Do any other board members have any questions?
Yeah, yes, regarding, uh, some comments that were just, yeah, I first, I agree with you, when the purchase of that, uh, we get the former name, but the STEM cap, you know, that was...
Mary Lauren. Mary Lauren.
It was the intention to, at some point, use that for education purposes, whether it be a school or, or something else. So, you know, that's on record.
Yep.
So I agree with that.
Mr. Tarver, can you just say that one more time? I want to make sure we get that on record in, in the mic. Yeah, I want to make sure we heard that correctly.
Mr. Tarver was on record saying he agreed with the assessment of the Orange Public School Business Administrator, Jason Ball.
Oh, wow.
Wow. So, um, I know some of us is pressed for time, and we have other engagements. Uh, Mr. Tarver, I don't want to cut you off, but, um, some of us do have to go. Um, so if you can move quickly in your questions, so that we can just vote on this budget and be done with it, please, thank you.
Yeah, I'll try to.
Yeah, well...
Uh, regarding the, uh, the roofwork, uh, STEM wasn't, it, it's something that I brought up before, so I'm glad to see that there is money allocated and definitely to, uh, to, to address the STEM. I, I still wish that we could have included someone in here to, uh, upgrade the HVAC in that system, excuse me, in that school, or some other school's. Because some of the months are active, and, you know, just students all across the nation, especially that school.
So, Mr. Tarver, let me just say this. The ESIP project that we're proposing is going to address a number of those concerns. The money that you see earmarked for STEM doesn't mean that it's just for the convent. It means that it's earmarked to go towards the STEM property in its entirety, right? How I view the dollars, right, which is based on estimates, is as long as I have the money allocated to the facilities budget, and you all know what that is, we're going to make sure that we put the dollars where they need to be put at the time of the projects. But I don't want to get ahead of myself and talk too much about the ESIP, but the ESIP will address lighting, HVAC, and boiler work throughout the entirety of the district, right? We are going to be energy efficient, we're going to be able to use our phones and laptops to control these state-of-the-art devices. We're not there yet, so I don't want to jump ahead of it, but we're getting closer to that becoming a reality.
Yeah, thank you. Um, regarding the tax levy, I don't, I don't agree with the increase. The residents are getting hit extremely bad, uh, from the number seating to help this only amounts to maybe a hundred and twenty-nine dollar increase, at, on average per household. I, I still think, uh...
So any other levy that's imposed will be coming from the city, not coming from the district, right? The city, right, the, the, the district is increasing, just for the record, a hundred and twenty-one dollars if you all approve it, right? Which, to me, is going to go a long way to help support all the initiatives that we discussed tonight.
Is it twenty-one or twenty-nine?
A hundred and...
So, on actual, the, the actual increase of levies, two percent, that equates to about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Speaking on behalf of the residents, um, the tax is getting increased enough. And we have fifteen plus an additional twenty million dollars that have to be added to this year's budget. I, I, I really do think that we can just stay, uh, not increase in this tax levy by that much. I think there's enough funds to address, hoping to address them within the district. I know in previous presentation, uh, you said there's currently sixty, an additional sixty thousand dollars earmarked for attorney fees. Um, I, I, I don't agree with that as well. It was, you know, revealed to our, our property, and you said, um, the last couple of years, there have been forty thousand dollar increases for attorney fees.
So the, the attorney fees are really attributable, and Ms. Harper's here, um, for a lot of the special education cases that we have, right? There are a number of, um, outstanding, I'll just call them outstanding concerns that parents have raised, et cetera. Which is why not only did we increase the, um, attorney's fees, but we also increased for compensatory damages. Um, we also increased because of the, uh, cyber incident that we had that occurred here. So there are a number of things that contributed to those increases. It's not a, it's not done in isolation, it's to make sure that we have enough money for those very important things that need to take place.
I have to ask those questions, because I don't see a way, I don't know where the attorney fees are going.
Yep. No problem.
Uh, I think...
Okay, so we're going to do this a little bit differently, because like I said, some people's time is very consuming, and they have prior engagements. I'm just going to put a motion on the floor to approve this, and then we can go back, if that's okay.
So... So what, what, what President's saying is we're going to get a motion? We'll take down the votes that we can, and when we have any, um, further discussion, then if you have further discussion, you can have your discussion at that time. But we want to record the votes for those members that are here who have, um, prior engagements that they need to get to. Move it closer.
Okay, uh, what I was saying, the, the resident, you said, you said the city is the one increasing it now, the district, school district?
No, the district is increasing it by, on average, a hundred and twenty-nine dollars per household. So we're, we're incre- we could increase by two percent, we're not reaching the full, um, full amount.
But, uh, I think we should hold up for that for, and I said that I don't think it's necessarily right to, 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 for some reason. They are giving up on it, something. And the reason on there will indicate something as, as a, if real reason why we need to do this. And I think we agree that we should suspend that for now.
That's not the, um, that's not the recollection that I have. So the money that we are considering surplus is one-time dollars, right? That's dollars that we're only going to have for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Those dollars don't carry forward. Um, the advice that we have is to continue to increase, especially if the state is going to increase, we should at, at least increase by our, uh, two percent. Because if we don't, then the state may not give us the money that we didn't increase by. So you, you get what I'm saying? If we, if they increase, but we don't increase, there's a disconnect.
Is there a way to approve tonight's budget? I don't, I don't want to slow this down, but I also don't think it's a good thing, and I don't want to slow the approval down.
Yeah, that, we can, we can table it and then just talk about it soon. I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. That, that, so we're going to vote on the budget and take the tax levy out? Okay.
So why don't we, why don't we do this, right? Let's, let's get the motion to remove the a hundred and twenty-nine dollars, which is equates to roughly two hundred and eighty thousand. We'll get a motion for that first. After we get that motion, then we can get a motion to approve the full budget.
Right, right. Okay.
A hundred percent understand.
All right, then can I get a motion to remove the tax levy?
Okay. Wait a minute, clearly you guys don't want to increase the tax levy. So we got, uh...
Jeff and Henry.
Mr. Henry.
And Jeff.
And Mr. Wingfield. So there's been a motion to, uh, approve reducing the proposed budget by two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to remove the local tax levy increase, and it's been properly seconded. We're going to do a roll call vote. Ms. Crockett?
Yes.
Mr. Sharif? Mr. Wingfield?
Yes.
Mr. Tarver?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Board Vice President Gravesandy?
No.
And Board President Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, so just to be clear, that motion was to pull out the two hundred and eighty thousand dollar in- increase to the tax levy. Motion carried.
Can I get a motion to approve the res- uh, pub- the Orange Public School pu- um, district budget for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five? Wingfield.
So we have, uh, moved by Mr. Wingfield, his property seconded by Dr. Turner. And just to clarify for the, for the resolution, this is a resolution to approve the proposed budget with the removal of two hundred and eighty thousand dollar, uh, increase in the tax levy. We're going to do a roll call vote? I'm sorry, yes, can we have comments?
Do we have any comments?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Ms. Gravesandy?
It's all about...
So are you voting yes, I'm sorry? Are you going to vote yes on the budget?
I have a something with my, my trial, and I'm so, I'm so sorry.
So are you, okay.
So, so hold on, hold on one second, then, uh, let's make sure we do it for the, for the record. So we typically would do the roll call and have the, the comments after the fact, is that okay with us proceeding?
Okay.
Okay, so let's do that. So there's been a motion on the floor to again approve the current proposed budget for the Orange Public School District with the removal... for the Orange Public School District with the removal of 280,000 dollars that was allocated for the increase in the tax levy. It's been properly seconded. Let's do a quick roll call. So, we're gonna start with Ms. Crockett.
Yes.
Mr. Sharif?
Yes.
Mr. Tarver?
I'm saying.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Wingfield?
Yes.
Ms. Gravesandie?
Yes.
With the exception of anything concerning Jeremy Gravesandie?
Yes. Oh, my God, yes, most definitely.
Please. Could you please put that on record?
Ethic charge against me, yes.
So, can you say that into the mic, please?
I accept anything to do with Jeremy Gravesandie.
Thank you.
And Board President Johnson?
Yes.
Madam President, motion carried, but you have comments.
Thank you. Can we go back to comments? Thank you, Tom. Okay.
So, the city increases that every year. We have not done an increase in our tax levy for how many years now? How many years now, Mrs. Zachary?
Since 2022.
20.
Two or three years.
2020. So, the budget, the 21, 22 budget, it wasn't in there.
Right, it was in 20.
So, it's been since then, but it hasn't been altered.
Correct, right? So, I understand, I am a taxpayer myself, and I understand we have a surplus for this year, but we need to consider this for at least the next school year. I know we cannot match, the state's impossible to match, but we still need our portion. And we've been here discussing getting money from the city for facility use. We've been here trying to get money from the city for the longest while, and here we're... Here.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Here you go.
You know, Mr. Cortez, here we have, you know, we're giving it another chance for them to get away again. So, how... I mean, I understand we're all taxpayers and we don't wanna put pressure on our own other taxpayers, but we have to provide education for our children at the end of the day, and we all want quality education. And every budget, we're here sitting and looking at the charter schools and the amount of money going into our charter schools, and we have to cash out, cash out. I have been discussing it and talking to the superintendent over and over to do whatever they say so that our students can come to our district. We can't control that. It's not possible for us to control, but there are areas where the money's coming out. I have one recommendation for the next budget, and I think Mr. Tarver brought this up the last time, actuals. I've... We've all read budget reports before. There is the actuals, there's a column for actuals, what was budget and what's actual. If we have the actuals, we can better understand how the numbers are being presented to us. And you might have less questions also, because once you have actuals, you know how the spending is going on. So, for me, I think if you put the actuals in for the next, we might have less questions and less... You know, we... I mean, I think we owe it to the public for them to see how we're spending, not only how, you know, we plan to spend, but how we have spent in the past. So, if you can put the actuals, I would greatly appreciate it for the next budget, next year, next school year, that is. And that's it, Madam President.
One question. I agree.
A question?
No.
No apologies, that's what we're here for.
So, the auditors are just about done with the audit. We were in contact with the Office of Fiscal Accountability. Our expectation is in the next couple of days, the audit will be complete with us bringing the audit to you all for your approval. Mrs. Zachary, did you wanna add anything?
What I want to suggest here on this, sometimes we need to go the long-term and short-term project, because when you think, oh, this proposal, this project, this proposal, this project, they are thinking that they just for tomorrow. I think that will, so if it's going to be for two, three years, let's consider that as long-term, something that will differentiate from long to short, because sometimes people will be thinking that the money is there for almost three years, four years, but it's not. So, that's just my proposal.
Correct. Just wanted to touch on one thing. I'm taking a reduced levy, so what's gonna happen is I either have to cover that now in the revenue section, or I decrease the expenses to cover what I'm taking out. I just wanna make sure that everybody's clear what's gonna happen.
Madam President, motion carried.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve February 28, 2024 executive session meeting minutes?
There's been a motion to approve the executive session minutes by Mr. Wingfield, has been seconded by Mr. Sharif. All in favor?
I have a comment on that.
Okay.
Very quickly, those meeting minutes are not accurate. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Regarding what happened, as far as my conversations, it was executive, so I can't talk about the details of it, but I can say 100% that things that I brought up, those minutes are not accurate.
Note it. Thank you.
So, as soon for the... For my last executive session, we've been...
This is from February?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have that. We don't have...
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Yes.
Any abstentions?
We have two exemptions.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve February 28 public meeting minutes?
There's been a motion to approve the February 28 public meeting minutes by Mr. Wingfield, properly seconded by Ms. Gravesandie. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Oppose.
Any abstentions?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We do not have any more comments, do we?
Yeah, just regarding Ms. Gravesandie's comments about the actuals inclusion, the state law does say that we're supposed to show for our year amounts, current year's amounts and proposed amounts for the new year, so hopefully the budget that we have actually will go through the whole of that.
We'll put a presentation together. We'll put a presentation together for the board, so that you can see what our budget to actuals are, just to ease the concern that you all have.
And regarding the tax comments, I'm almost positive there's no other district in the state as small as ours that has a 40 million dollar increase going into next year. And I know our surplus does not repeat itself next year, but still, our small district is a 5 million, 40 is in a row. So, I don't really...
But just be mindful, the money that you saw, right? 18 million of that is money that we found through a lot of diligent work over the last three years, right? That's... Okay, I just wanna... I want the record to reflect that for everyone that's watching and everyone that has any questions, right? We put in a number of sound financial and budgeting practices that did not exist when we got here, okay? So, that 18 million dollars is a result of the work that Mr. Zachary and I, in tandem with our consultants and our staff, found that money, right? That's money that existed long before I was here, that no one seemed to really delve into. But because of expenses and things of that nature, where there were checks that were issued and they never were cashed, and they three, four, or five years old, that stuff was here prior to us getting here. We found it. So, that one-time money is one-time money. That's it. And that's it, Madam President.
Do we have any public comments? I mean, I'm just saying, somebody could email, somebody could be on social media. I'm gonna close public comments. Can I get a motion?
Motion to close the agenda, or... Because you never got a motion for public...
Oh, can I get a motion to open up to public comments? Being that there's no public comments, can I get a motion to close public comments?
So, there's been a motion to open and close public comment. Both have been properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carried. Motion's carried.
Thank you. District meetings, next scheduled meetings are as follows. Public Relations Committee Virtual Meeting, Wednesday, May 1st, 2024, at 4:45 p.m. Orange Board of Education Public Board Meeting, Wednesday, May 8th, at 7:30 p.m., held at the Orange's of Education Administrative Building, 451 Lincoln Avenue, Orange, New Jersey, 07050. Will recess until 6:45, but no later than 7:30. Closed meetings, Facilities Committee Meeting in virtual, Monday, April 29, 2024, at 4:00. Curriculum Meeting, virtual meeting, Tuesday, April 23rd, at 3:30 p.m. Special Education Meeting, Tuesday, April 30th, 2024, at 3:30 p.m. Policy Committee, virtual meeting, Thursday, May 2nd, at 4:00 p.m. Finance Committee, virtual meeting, Thursday, May 2nd, at 5:30 p.m. Human Resources Committee, meeting virtual, Monday, May 6th, at 4:00 p.m. Being that we all done with board comments, can I get a motion to adjourn?
There's been a motion to close the meeting by Mrs. Sharif, properly seconded by Mr. Henry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carried.
No, they missed it.
Mr. Tarver abstained.
Okay. As always.
Have a good evening.